Commissioner Patel, I just want to make sure we can hear you.
Hi, good evening.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Recording in progress.
Vice Chair Ebner, we're ready to begin.
Welcome to this regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, April 11th. And I'll call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you please do the roll call, Ashley?
Yes. Chair Williams is absent. Vice Chair Ebner?
Present.
Commissioner Nugent?
Present.
Commissioner Patel?
Present.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Present.
It is noted that Commissioner Patel is joining us remotely from business room of T R Y P Trip by Windham, Pittsburgh, 1740 40th Street in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, 15,00201, where an agenda has been duly posted. Welcome, SEMA. So, the reg- this is the regular meeting. The conference code ID is 814-6006-6988, with passcode 52 or 052416. Again, it's conference ID 814-6006-6988, passcode 052416. Good evening and welcome. We are excited to be here in person with options for virtual participation. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk, please. If participating remotely, use the raise hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for the public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Ashley, will you please read the consent calendar?
Yes. Item number one, item from the March 28th, 2023 adjourned Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission meeting minutes approval. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 14th, 2023.
Are there any members of the council who would like to pull this item from the consent calendar? I see none. If any members of the public wish to come on, uh, comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar? Do we have any members of the public who want to comment? I'm sorry.
Vice Chair Ebner, we don't have any public commenters at this time.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items.
I'll second.
Great. Can we take a roll call, please?
Yes. Chair Williams is absent. Vice Chair Ebner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
Passes four oh. Unanimous. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to come on, comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents commi- the commission from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a fifteen minute, fifteen minutes. However, that is subject to the commission's discretion and can be extended if the commission wishes to do so. Ashley, are there any public comment requests?
Vice Chair Ebner, we don't have any public commenters at this time.
Okay. Going once, going twice, three. We'll close the public comment, period. Can you read item number two, Ashley, please?
Yes. Item number two, item from the March 28th, 2023 adjourned Planning Commission meeting, appeal of a new single-family residence at 125 15th Avenue, PA 2021 049.
Thank you. We will start with a staff presentation, followed by appellant presentation, applica- applicant presentation, clarifying questions from the commission and the public comments. The appellant and applicant will be given up to fifteen minutes each to present, and members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak depending on the number of speakers. The applicant may also be given five minutes at the end to respond to public comments. Once the public hearing is closed, the commission will deliberate and render a decision on the project. Finally, if a decision is made tonight, the decision of the Planning Commission on this project can be appealed to the city council within ten days. So, Ms. Lai, it looks like we start with you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ebner. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. Lynda Lee, staff planner for Agenda Item Two, uh, to review an appeal for his new single-family residence at 125 15th Avenue, PA dash 2021 dash 049. Uh, to provide some background, uh, to provide some background, this PA was initially filed in July of 2021. At the time, the project proposed a one-story addition to the existing single-family residence. Then, in April of 2022, the applicant proposed a substantial change in scope for full demolition of the existing house and construction of a new two-story, single-family residence. This required a second neighborhood meeting. Following three additional review cycles, the project was then deemed complete and duly noticed from December 9th through December 19th, 2022. Uh, staff received significant interest from the neighborhood and public during this period. Uh, this led to additional design revisions, which the applicant accepted as conditions of approval. Then on January 20th, 2023, the zoning administrator issued approval of the project. This decision was appealed on January 30th by David Bauer, the appellant, bringing us here to the Planning Commission tonight, who has authority to review and take action on the appeal. The project site is located at 125 15th Avenue and consists of one parcel located in the Hayward Park neighborhood of San Mateo. This block of 15th Avenue is between Palm Street and South B Street. This aerial view shows existing residence, which is one-story and 1,250 square feet in size. There's also an existing detached garage located in the rear yard with access from the alley. Protected trees on-site include two street trees at the project's site frontage and one 21-inch coast live oak in the rear yard. The general plan land use designation is single-family and is consistent with the zoning district, R1C. The project description consists of full demolition of the existing residence and construction of a new single-family residence. The project also includes a new accessory dwelling unit, or ADU. As proposed, the project requires a special use permit for full demolition of the existing residence and a single-family dwelling design review, or S F D D R, for the proposed residence. The new residence is proposed as two stories with a total floor area of 2,238 square feet. The project would also convert and expand the existing detached garage into a new ADU with an attached one-car garage, shown here on the site plan in blue. Uh, the proposed ADU also prompts, I skipped too fast, also prompts removal of a protected tree shown here in red. The project is subject to the city's general plan policies, code, and design guidelines. The zoning code provides a list of development standards summarized here on this table and includes floor area ratio, building height, and setbacks. The ADU, which is less than 800 square feet, is not included in the floor area square footage calculations. Since the project consists of a new single-family residence with a new ADU, the project is considered a housing development project and is subject to the Housing Accountability Act, or H A A. The state law limits local agencies' ability to deny housing development projects when it meets all applicable objective standards. Overall, staff has evaluated the project and finds that it meets all applicable standards in the general plan and zoning code. For public comments, staff received a total of 12 comments during the initial project review and public notice period. Comments primarily focused on the initial project design, loss of off-street parking due to the ADU, and concerns for privacy and shadows. The applicant responded with substantial design revisions that include reduce, reduce second-story windows and increased privacy solutions, all of which were supported by some of the initial commenters. There has been one comment received since the appeal has been filed and has been supportive of the project as well. Next, staff will provide an overview of the reasons for appeal. The first reason of appeal is removal of the protected oak tree. The appellant urged preservation by modifying the ADU. A staff reviewed the project arborist report, which describes the tree to be in fair condition with poor form due to a large hole in the upper crown. The project arborist has since provided an updated statement that suitability for preservation is poor due to the regular pruning that occurs from the adjacent neighboring property and overhead lines, as seen in this photo. ADU state law also provides that the city's review of an ADU is ministerial and the city is limited from applying discretionary findings, including appeals. Although recommendation to preserve the tree may be made, the request to remove the tree for construction of an ADU cannot be denied. The applicant has proposed replacement trees that include a 24-inch box strawberry tree and a 15-gallon sweet bay tree. The second reason for appeal is a lack of consistency with the single-family dwelling design guidelines for neighborhood scale and its impact to privacy and views with regards to neighborhood scale and building height. The project proposes a building plate line height of 21 feet eight inches and overall roof peak of 25 feet nine inch. This is below the city's maximum building height limit of 24 feet at plate line and 32 feet at roof peak. The project also includes second-story stepbacks of nine feet eight inches from both side property lines to further reduce the building mass, as shown in the side-by-side elevation. The project also uses a gable roof form along with stucco siding and asphalt shingle roof, which are very common in the neighborhood. An, an example is the adjacent house at 121 15th Avenue and 153. Although the adjacent buildings are one-story in size, the proposed project is similar or lower than other two-story buildings nearby. An example is 127 15th Avenue, which does not incorporate any stepbacks at the second story. Overall, staff does not consider the project to be inconsistent with the design guidelines for neighborhood scale and compatibility. To address privacy concerns, the applicant voluntarily agreed to reduce the second-story windows by raising the window sill to minimum of five feet above the finished floor of both sides. This is reflected as a condition of approval. Secondly, the applicant proposes adding a 12-inch tall lattice along the existing six-foot-tall fence for increased privacy along the side and rear property lines. With regards to view, this area of 15th Avenue is primarily flat with little to no views of the distant bay and hills. Therefore, the project would not pose any impact to views. Overall, staff finds that the project is in substantial conformance with the design guidelines. The last reason for appeal is a potential shading of an adjacent solar panel. The appellant expressed concerns that the shading may result in financial loss due to the reduction in solar energy. This image shows the project site and the adjacent's, uh, adjacent neighbor's solar panel. Staff reviewed the general plan policies cited by the appellant and found that they focus primarily on public outreach to encourage new solar energy installations and are not intended to preclude development of structures due to shadows that it could cast on adjacent properties. Staff also considered various state laws, including the Solar Shade Control Act, which limits shading caused by a tree or shrub. Solar easements were also looked at, and this allows neighbors to enter into a voluntary agreement to grant easements to receive sunlight across another property for solar energy systems. However, staff confirmed with the adjacent neighbor that no solar easement or documentation exists. The appellant also requested a shadow study, which is not typically required for single-family projects. Uh, however, the applicant has prepared the shadow study showing the project during the times of June, March, and September, and lastly, December. The study shows that some shadows would be cast on the neighbor's solar panels during the winter of December 21st at 3:00 PM, shown in red here. However, daylight is typically limited during this time, and the average sunset on December 21st is at 4:55 PM. Again, shadow studies are not a required standard. Single-family residents are subject to building height limits and daylight plane requirements, which the project meets. For environmental review, the project is categorically exempt under the following sequel guidelines, since it represents demolition of a single-family residence and construction of a new, single-family dwelling with a detached ADU. Given that the project meets all standards, policies and regulation, staff is recommending that the planning condition, Planning Commission adopt a resolution to deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's decision to approve the special use permit and single-family dwelling design review. Uh, this concludes staff's presentation. The appellant and applicant are here to present and speak as well.
Thank you, Ms. Lee, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name earlier.
No problem.
Um, so are we moving on to the appellant?
Vice Chair Ebner, that, uh, the appellant is next before the, um, applicant.
Okay.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. I can't get my, I'm being blocked by, my video's being blocked. There I am. Great, thank you. Good evening. Um, appreciate you being here tonight. My name's David Bauer, and I live at 122 15th Avenue in Hayward Park. I'm a retired residential building contractor with 45 years' experience in building and remodeling homes in the peninsula, including San Mateo. For the past 15 years, I participated on community boards, just like yours, and commissions addressing city planning and information, uh, if, infrastructure issues. As a resident of San Mateo, I've been impressed with the care that the city is taking to assure that the general plan and the city ordinances are incorporate concerns for compatibility of new buildings in neighborhoods, uh, preservation of heritage trees, and initiatives that address climate change and sustainability. When the proposed building plans of 125 15th Avenue were circulated to us in the neighborhood, my neighbors and I were surprised to see that the proposed plan was not compliant with some of these important regulations. On December 21st, 2022, I expressed my concerns to the city in an email with suggestions for lowering the primary residence building height based on my decades of working with, uh, clients and their architects. It would allow the building to be built with the same floor plan while honoring the design guidelines of the general plan. A suggestion to change the floor plan of the ADU to save the 21-inch heritage oak tree and questions about shading in the photovoltaic array, as Ms. Lee has just described. Building plans for 125 15th Avenue were nevertheless approved, as submitted without changes. When I feel the city is not honoring the specifics of the general plan, this approval negatively affects our neighborhood quality of life and more importantly, sets unfortunate precedence for future building in San Mateo. If you could hold this slide for me, there are three specific aspects of the approved project that I'm appealing because I feel they're inconsistent with the general plan. I think that was the previous slide. Uh, can you, uh, okay, let's continue with the next slide. First aspect is the adherence to the general plan guidelines of, um, uh, consistency with neighborhood character. The guidelines require consideration of a new building's consistency with the immediate context and neighborhood context. Both of these examples that you see show the proposed project is inconsistent with surrounding buildings because of its increased height and two-story character. Next slide, please. Elements of design. The guidelines require that new buildings respect the scale of the neighborhood building size. Notice that the exam- in this example from the general plan, building number three is the same height as building number four and slightly higher than building number two. In contrast, the proposed residence at 125 15th Avenue is eight feet higher or 45% taller than the house on the right and nine feet taller or 54% taller than the house on the left. So the proposal fails to meet this directive, in my opinion. Next slide, please. Guidelines also address the eve line of second-story additions. They encourage lowering second-floor eve lines to make additions more compatible with existing single-story buildings. Next slide. By lowering the eve and plate lines, building mass and scale are reduced, and that results in a proposed building blending into existing neighborhood styles, and it limits the disruption, disruption of existing patterns. Next slide, please. Comparing this project to the three highlighted bullet po- bullet points shows it's not compatible with single-story patterns. It creates wall patterns that are not compatible with the existing homes, and it negatively alters the housing pattern. Next slide, please. Second-story setback section also directs attention to how new buildings would affect daylight entering neighbor, neighboring properties. This is not daylight plane consideration, which was created in, as I'm sure you know, in the late 80s and early 90s to protect views into people's bathrooms and bedrooms or living rooms. This is, uh, and I'll get to this in just a moment. This project does not, in my opinion, maximize light into neighboring properties when it blocks daylight for more than half the year, as I'll show you in, uh, following slides. Next slide, please. And is the proposal project, proposed project in balance with its surroundings when it is significantly greater in height and mass? I don't think so. In every one of these considerations, the proposed project fails to adhere to the guidelines and overwhelms its neighbors. I believe it's possible to avoid these unfortunate circumstances with the following examples of design modifications. The proposed residence has 10-foot ceilings on the first floor and nine-foot ceilings on the second floor, which together push the building height much higher than surrounding buildings. The building could easily be reduced in height by lowering the first floor plate height to eight feet six and the second floor plate height to seven feet nine, while vaulting the second floor ceilings so the feelings of spaciousness are retained. Second floor joists could also be reduced from 12 inches to 16, I'm from 16 to 12 inches. These three changes would reduce the height of the building by three feet one inch or 12%. That creates less mass, smaller scale, and more light for the neighboring properties, which is very important, as I'll mention in a moment. It also lowered construction costs in a number of ways by lowering drywall volume, uh, decreasing, um, door heights, lowering framing costs, and other, um, uh, other savings. Next slide, please. Heritage trees. The second aspect of this project that I think needs reconsideration is the removal of the 21-inch heritage tree. Next slide. I'm well aware of the ADU, uh, of the state requirements about ADUs, and I'm not suggesting that the, the, the city mu- uh, try to fight the state, uh, the state requirements. But while the city ordinance does allow removal of heritage trees, that action should be one of last resort. A landscape contractor I spoke to thinks this tree is about, um, 30 years old. Even replacing one tree with two new trees, the size of the tree shown on the right, which is a 24-inch box tree, two years in the ground, would take, would require decades of growth to recover the canopy. I think there's a simple solution that preserves both the floor plan and the tree. Next slide, please. This is the existing floor plan as proposed. Next slide. My proposal is to flip the floor plan, leave it exactly the way it is, but just flip it over so that the hallway will still enter from the, um, uh, the converted garage into the new space. And that, by doing that, you retain, you retain all the architectural aspects of this floor plan, and you get a nice semi-private garden area outside of that bedroom, and you save the tree. Next slide, please. Climate change and, um, uh, sustainability. Section, next slide, please. Section D of the 2030 Urban Design Element of the General Plan, which was approved in 2010, 13 years ago, under the heading Sustainable Design, states sustainability starts in early design stages of development. The location and orientation of structures on the parcel are critical in order to take full advantage of solar opportunities, shading, and preserve natural resources. Next slide, please. The 2040 General Plan, General Plan Draft Land Use Element, that's a mouthful, which is currently being considered by the city, proposes increasing installation of new solar and renewable energy systems. Next slide. A records request as the city revealed that San Mateo has installed nearly 2,200 solar arrays, having a total cost of more than $88 million and with a capacity of 20.1 megawatts of power. The proposed project at 21, uh, 125 15th Avenue shades the existing photovoltaic array at 129 15th Avenue for a significant portion of the year. Next slide. This is the same shade study that we saw in the staff presentation, but I'm including the colored version. You'll notice in the, um, on that diagram, the yellow is shading after 3:00 PM and the green is shading after noon. Next slide, please. This is on September 21st. This is December 21st. The shading at noon covers half of the photovoltaic array roughly, and by 3:00 PM, it's covering the entire house. This is not my interpretation. This is what the applicant has provided. Next slide, please. On March 21st, we have a very similar condition to, uh, September 21st. We're still seeing significant shading after 3:00 PM. And finally, next slide. On June 21st, while we're seeing a small amount of shading at 3:00 PM, that still captures the bottom, um, panels on the array. while we're seeing a small amount of shading at 3:00 PM, that still captures the bottom panels on the array. So I'm questioning how this project meets the city's sustainability goals when it's reducing solar electric generation on the neighboring building. Next slide. Based on the information given to me by the owner of 129 15th Avenue, this chart for this, this chart shows that instead of enjoying an $82 annual electric bill with the, with the construction of this project, that electric bill is going to go up by $981. Prior to approval of the project, I suggested an email that the shade study be done, just like the one I've just, I've shown you. And I was told that the applicant did not, was not required to produce one. However, those pages that I just showed you had already been provided to the planning department and had not been shared with the rest of the neighbors. It's part of their plan set. And on the day that I filed my appeal, while standing at the counter waiting for the appeal to be processed, I was emailed these four plan pages showing the shading. I'm confused by why these pages weren't included in the plan sets circulated with the neighbors or made available to the public. And I wonder about the lack of transparency that this shading study introduces and creates the suspicion to me that the entire project approval process has not been transparent. Next slide, please. San Mateo's thriving, well-managed committee, city and the city plan is an important set of guidelines to allow it to continue to be so. However, this project doesn't conform to either the immediate or neighborhood context. It doesn't conform to the scale and massing of existing buildings, except for the one outlier that was shown, which was built in 1985 and would is, is almost three times as tall as any other building. It doesn't conform, conform to the recommendations of to lower two-story buildings to reduce wall heights. It alters the existing neighborhood pattern of single-story homes. It is out of balance with the adjacent homes 45%, 54% taller than its neighbors. And it requires the removal of a heritage tree that I think is unnecessary. Finally, and most importantly, this project reverses the general plan's sustainability initiatives. It seriously blocks daylight to 129 15th Avenue and directly increases the energy costs in perpetuity of those neighbors. And finally, it sets a terrible precedent that jeopardizes the economic viability of the approximately 2,200 San Mateo property owners who've spent more than $88 million installing energy generation systems to meet these sustainability initiatives and to address our desperately needed climate change policies. So I'm requesting that this project be sent back to planning to reconsider the things that I've, I've raised here tonight. And I think if that were done, and these are very, I think there are some simple things that can be done to make this project more accommodating to the neighborhood. I think that the neighborhood quality will be preserved, and this house, this new building, will be in addition to the neighborhood rather than an exception. I want to thank you for allowing me to present this and and hope that you're, you will take this into consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bauer. We have a presentation by the applicant. Good evening. Welcome.
My name is Jim Zomorodi, the owner of property at 125 15th Avenue. Thank you for your time. Appreciate you coming here. It looks like that you are the only person on the agenda, so thank you. I feel important here. Two years ago, when we started this project and we went to the planners, that's usually the people that we see as the highest authority. We ask them what they want to see. They tell us what's allowed, what's by the rules and everything. Then we hire professionals to go and come with a plan that they approve and everything. So this is not something that I came up with personally. It's not my experience. It doesn't matter if I have 30 years of experience, 40 years of experience. This was come up with people who do this for a living. We had architects, we have arborists, we have civil engineers that worked with the city planners to come up with this plan. It has taken two years, a couple of revisions and everything. We had public meetings for everybody to come and say what they want to say and everything, so we can consider what needs to be done. As far as I'm concerned, and I've been told by the planners, this project meets the state ADU revolution, zoning code standard, and design guidelines. It seems like that some of the neighbors don't like this, which it's, I understand that. Some people don't like change. So the three items that were brought up by our neighbors, I'm going to address them one at a time. First one is the heritage tree in the backyard. We were told, not even because of this heritage tree, but in each project, we are told to get the arborist report. Now, these are people who study trees for years and years and years. We had a professional arborist do a study on this, and the tree came back as a fair condition and everything. And their recommendation was it's okay to remove it and replace it with a couple of other properties. Later on, when the gentleman next door brought up the issue, we had the arborists come back and do one more study that we paid for and everything. And we have provided that study to the planning and everything. And in this study, he did a more thorough research and everything, and they believe that this tree, because of the neighbor has been cutting the branches that went to their side and everything, is not symmetric. And they have said that in their new report, that they don't believe this is a sustainable tree and everything. Matter of fact, in a personal conversation we had with them, he said that he's amazed that after the last storm that we have, it hasn't fallen, and probably the next one will make it fall and everything. I'm all into about keeping heritage trees and everything, but not when a professional tells me that this is going to fall on the neighbor's house or my house. There's a chance of that, and I've been warned of that. The second issue that the neighbor has brought up is loss of privacy and everything. When we started this project, the first thing we asked the city of San Mateo is, are we allowed to do a two-story house? And we were told, yes, you're allowed to do a two-story house. Then we asked him, what's the maximum that this house can be? And we were told it's 32 feet high. So we didn't even go to maximum as the neighbor is claiming and everything. Our height is at 25 feet nine inches. The second story plate allowable is 24 feet. We are at 21 foot eight inches. Even if you look at the neighbor's complaint and everything, you see that there is homes two doors down from us that is 32 feet and everything. So us being within the limits and everything, to show a good faith, we are willing to, instead of building this on a crawl space, to build it on slab, which lowered the height by another 12 inches or a feet and everything. So we will be under the limits by eight feet. And although the neighbors are only one story, but because they're on crawl space and everything, and raised foundation and everything, they're at 17 and 18 feet, our new plan would be at 24 feet. The second thing that we did for the loss of privacy is, after the planners mentioned this to us, we agreed to make all the second-story windows high windows and everything, which gives the privacy that the neighbors are looking for and everything. I have to tell you, this is not something that we have to do, but we are doing it to show our good faith and everything. The final objection that the neighbor has is the shading, and we were only required by the city to do the daylight plain, which we did. And when the complaint came up, Linda approached us and said, hey, do you want to do a shadow study? And we said, sure, we do a shadow study. So the shadow study is not required. So this is not a conspiracy or anything, that we hide anything from public. This was done after the complaint was done to see how bad it is. And according to our specialists and everything, on December 21st, which is the shortest day of the year, the neighbor still gets five hours of sun. Yes, they're not going to get eight hours, 10 hours and everything. They will get five hours and everything on the worst day of the year. But I mean, you can compare that if it's a shady day or there's cloud in the air and everything. So we have done this. We, it does pass the study, and as I, I mean, Linda says it best and everything. We have, the project meets all the state ADU regulation. It meets all the zoning code standards and the design guidelines. Unfortunately, it doesn't pass the neighbor's guidelines and everything. But if we need to go back to the drawing board, I guess I needed to know from now on to start talking to these guys ahead of time to see what their guidelines are. So I don't see any reason this project shouldn't go forward as planning has approved it and recommended it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Can we open it up to public comment? And are any people online trying to comment?
Vice Chair, right now, we have one public commenter online, and we also have one public commenter in person.
Okay, how do we prefer to go? Do we go online or in place or?
We can do our in-person public commenter first.
Okay, perfect.
Robert, you can come up to the microphone.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I'm a longtime resident of 15th Avenue, over 36 years. History in San Mateo goes back to grade school. So I'm familiar with the area, familiar with the heritage of that neighborhood, and am really here to maintain that. When I hear that we may not be up for change in the neighborhood, I will point out 121 was rebuilt. No disapproval. 114 was approved, no disapproval in the neighborhood, and 141 was approved with no disapproval from the from the neighborhood. Why? Because every one of those buildings was like for like. It was a one-story for a one-story, and it conformed, and they worked really hard to fit within the confines of this well-known neighborhood called Hayward Park that has heritage. And if you're going to use 1115th as an example, which I believe he has, there's history there, and I can give it to you if you want to give me a little more time, and I think you may be a little shocked as what you might find out. It's a little embarrassing what took place. But again, that's what happens when you've been around for a while. You have what's called tribal knowledge, the information that is never shared, but you gather and input forth. I think we're here today because we're not doing like-for-like. I'm wondering about what the solar industry might say for all the installations they have put in, to find out that they can be blocked and they're not as efficient as they tell the the owner who installs them. Now, I'm one of those guys that likes to walk around and do the eye test. I walked around the neighborhood, and all the other installations of solar in that neighborhood are not obstructed one iota. In fact, it looks like they were actually installed to make sure that they had full and clear clearance from their next-door neighbor. In addition to that, I, how are we doing on time? I look at what is done, and I say, why? You know? Change, guys, John Wooden, not all change is, is progress. This is not progress. This is not change for the neighborhood. It's not moving things forward. I don't think it takes into the spirit of what the planning commission had put forth as their goals when you go out into the community. Hayward Park is an area that holds dear to San Mateo. As you all know, the history there, as we start to destroy these, these areas, we're going to lose the integrity of San Mateo. I think there's a way of getting this done. I like to see like-for-like. I like to see a little more community input, and I also, on three calls, said that I would take any officer or councilperson, planning commission, and walk around the neighborhood, because what looks good on a set of plans, once you put them in action, you say, oops, we have a problem. I don't want to see, oops, we have a problem, and I'm more than willing to, to share that information with you. Thank you.
Vice Chair, we have one public commenter via Zoom. If anybody else wants to comment via Zoom, please raise your hand now. It looks like we might have another. Margaret Williams, you can go ahead and unmute.
Good evening. This is Michael Williams. Margaret is my wife. I live at 126 14th Avenue behind the project. Not opposed to the house with the ADU, but I do have a concern about the access to the ADU. In a prior Zoom meeting with the property owners, they were proposing that the access to the ADU would be on the alleyway and not from the street address, and I'm wondering if that is still the case. The right-of-way is used for public utilities and emergency access and vehicle access to garages that are located on the right-of-way alleyway. And that's my concern. I believe that the ADU should be accessible from its street address on 15th Avenue. Thank you.
Vice Chair, it looks like the person who was going to speak lowered their hand, so we don't have any more public commenters at this time.
Okay, so we'll close the pub, we'll close the public comment period and move on to deliberations with the planning commission?
Vice Chair, what about clarifying questions?
Pardon me?
Clarifying questions?
Actually, we were supposed to offer the appellant or applicant five minutes to respond is that part of our procedure here?
Yes, Vice Chair, they have five minutes to respond. But did you want to do clarifying questions first?
Sure, we'll go clarifying questions first. Seema.
Hello, good evening. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. Thank you so much for the informative presentations. I have a few questions for staff. My first question is, my understanding is that prior to these neighborhood meetings, there was some information sent out about this project to the neighbors. I think it's typically sent within a 500-foot radius of the property. Do you know if there was any information included in the material sent out to the neighbors about the Housing Accountability Act and that it applies to this project and what the implications of that mean?
Sure, through the chair I can respond. Yeah, so the, the project notice for this did not mention the Housing Accountability Act or HAA in the notice.
Okay, thank you. And if my understanding is correct, the Housing Accountability Act applies to multi-unit projects and prohibits jurisdictions from denying a multi-unit project that meets all of the jurisdiction's objective design guidelines. I was wondering if you could explain for the public that might be listening what the difference is between an objective design guideline and a subjective design guideline?
Through the chair, I can take a stab at that. Good evening, Manira Sandhir, Planning Manager and Zoning Administrator. So that is correct, Commissioner Patel, that the Housing Accountability Act requires jurisdictions to only apply objective standards to projects that qualify as an HAA project. This standard, for example, our objective standard could be a daylight plain requirement, which has certain specific guidance on how on how a project is designed to not block the daylight to a neighboring property. And it has specific height requirements. So for example, it says that at 12 feet at the property line, you have to draw a line that's 45 degrees up. So it's a very, very quantified, objective standard that any reasonable member of the public would agree and, you know, would understand is the same thing. A discretionary standard, on the other hand, which a lot of our design guidelines are discretionary, require a subjective interpretation of the guideline. And therefore, two people may have a different interpretation in how the guideline is read and understood and applied. I hope that clarifies the question.
Yes, that was great. Thank you so much. My next question is, do we have any objective guidelines around entrances or ADUs that speak to whether they must be off of the property address or whether they can be off a public right-of-way?
My understanding is that we do not have such a standard. We have standards that there has to be independent access to the ADU. However, there is no requirement that it has to be off of a public right-of-way.
Great, thank you. Do you know if the Housing Accountability Act has any provisions for denial related to photovoltaic systems and the effects of a project on an adjacent photovoltaic system?
Sure, so staff discussed this with our city's attorney office and we did not find that disruptions to PV systems are in examples of denial or in the findings for denial related to HAA.
Okay, great. If I remember correctly, I believe there is a provision for denial in the Housing Accountability Act that relates to findings that impact public health or safety. Did staff have any concerns about this project relating to public health and safety?
Good evening, Mazharin Vikari, Assistant to the Attorney. We do not have any concerns.
Okay, great. And I think I may have just asked this, but just in case, if you could remind me again, the staff determined that this project meets all objective design guidelines, correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Those are all of my questions this evening.
Thank you.
Through the chair. I've got some questions. The first is, is a representative from AMS Design in attendance right now? The architects or designers for this project?
We do seem to have a hand raised through the chair. Ashley, could you please call on them? I believe they're the applicant and designer.
Okay, great. Because this might, this might be, need to be answered by them. So my first question is regarding the shadow study because that seems to be a significant bone of contention. And so I just want to know, I've made many shadow studies in my life and reviewed them. And I have some questions about this one. I'm a little frustrated by this shadow study because it is unnecessarily confusing, but I want to make sure that my interpretation of it is correct. It appears to show, I'm looking at the shadow study. I'm wondering if we could bring, say, a 04.03 up? It's the, it's the shadow study. It's a, it's a attachment nine from the packet, the preliminary shadow study. Okay, thank you. Yeah, this, this works. This is, this is perfect. So as I look at this, if I were a layperson and I were to see this plan view, I would interpret it, I would interpret the shadows as being cast on the roofs of the adjacent properties' structures. By looking at this, I see that the shadows, the shadow extents appear to be actually the extents of the shadow on flat land, as though the adjacent structures or the plan view, the plan outline of those structures were completely flat and not extruded. This to me seems unnecessarily confusing, but I want to make sure if the designer can verify that these indeed are shadow studies showing the extents of the shadows as though they were being cast on flat land and not on 3D volumes extruded to the height of the adjacent structures. Is that the case?
Yes, you are right.
So they are being shown as though they were cast on flat land. And so if I were to look at that and then look at the plan view elevation, what I would see are different interpretations. So if I, if I didn't know that, if I didn't expect that as a possibility, somebody who is not maybe a designer or an architect might look at this and think this is showing different shadow patterns in a 3D extruded world, as though we're looking down at Google Earth and seeing shadows cast on actual structures. And so what this is doing is it's causing people who read this plan to see shadows as though they were cast on roofs, where when you look at the site front elevation and you look at the dashed line for 3:00 PM in the afternoon, it's actually a shadow being cast on just the wall of the structure next door. That's unfortunate that that was presented in such a way because it appears that there is confusion. But thank you for clarifying that. The other question I have for staff is, and this is a bit rhetorical, does the city prohibit the removal of trees that meet the heritage criteria?
Through the chair is the question, you know, whether the city has denied tree removal permits of protected trees?
Are there, are there instances where heritage trees are allowed to be removed within the code?
Yes, so we have a tree removal permitting process. So if the public wants to request to remove a tree, they have to go through the process. And there are discretionary findings associated with it.
Okay, and has this, has this followed that process?
So since this is an ADU, it's ministerial.
Okay, it doesn't need to be, okay.
Correct, yes.
But if it were not an ADU, it would, it would, it would be required to follow that process?
Correct.
And it would be required that replacement trees are provided if it were to be removed?
Yes.
Okay. Are there, are there replacement trees? Okay, in this, in this project? Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Martin?
Through the chair, my fellow commissioners have asked my questions.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, Adam and Seema, for thoroughly going through this project for all of us. I, I do have a question for the applicant. One of the points that was, one of the points that was made was if you lowered, let me see, you've already gone to a slab, which I think is a, is a distraction from the quality of the building, unfortunately. But there was a suggestion of maybe shortening the ceiling heights and the floor joists. Do you have any interest in doing that? Does it matter to you? I'm just curious. Can you come up to the?
Sure, thank you. I wish it was that easy and everything. Unfortunately, the whole set has to be redone. The whole structure has to be redone. All of the work that we have done have to be redone and everything. So I thought it's much easier by lowering it by one foot. And beside that, the gentleman who recommended that and everything, he was talking about meeting wall, ceiling and everything in the second floor and everything. So it's not exactly the plan that we wanted to get and everything.
Okay, perfect. I was just curious. I, I know he had made a statement and I hadn't seen you refer to it. So I just wasn't sure.
Sure, thank you.
Well, thank you. I just want to be perfectly clear here that we're here this evening to help make a project a little bit more amendable for everybody involved. Yet, we as a body have absolutely no power to reject this project. And I think it's perfectly clear from what we've been, been presented from staff that for this project to get to this point is somewhat difficult to comprehend where the only, that the outcome has been predetermined. And I would hope that, I mean, we rarely get to this position, but I would hope that there's another logical way to finalize these types of disputes without having to go through the process that we are doing this evening. I do not have questions on this project, nor do I have any other comments. Do any other commissioners have any comments?
Through the chair, just want to check if we're, if there's an appellate response period?
So the applicant has a chance to respond to public comments. He has a five-minute rebuttal. The appellant does not have a five-minute rebuttal.
Thank you for the clarification. Then through the chair, I, I have limited comments. Is now an okay time?
Perfect time.
Perfect time. To, to the appellant and to the folks who spoke or wrote in, I wanted to thank you for taking the time to go through the process to the appellant. It's, it's, I'm always appreciative when I see someone read the plans that we, that we review or in the cases with the updated general plan that we're trying to update and make better. And so it's always appreciative, I'm always appreciative to see people read through those documents and apply them in this way. So I just want to thank everyone for their, their time and myself as a resident of Hayward Park, although outside of sort of the immediate radius, I am someone that walks the neighborhood and, and looks at it a lot and also visited the site pretty close to the equinox, as it happens. And so to my fellow commissioners note about the shadow study, I took for granted that it was misleading. Thank you for calling it out. It's, the shadows on the equinox are not going to hit the roof if they're even going to hit the wall of the house. So, so it's interesting to look at all this. But even with the HAA aside, the, to me, the findings are here to make. I don't think the, I think the ZA followed the, the correct process and made all the findings. I don't think anything that was stated as, as other ideas for the project are invalid or aren't good ideas. I just don't see them as rising to the standard. And then, as has been touched on, the HAA really sort of invalidates that sort of subjective application anyway. So those are my only other comments. Thanks.
Thank you. Seema, any comments?
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Wigan's comments. I always appreciate when people take the time to read all the documentation. It's pretty difficult to navigate. And so I appreciate the thought and time that went into this. I personally empathize with the appellant. I, I have solar on my house and I can understand that it may be frustrating when there is development that could impact, you know, a financial investment like that. But, you know, I, I agree with Vice Chair Adneder that there are some very strict state laws in place that have very narrow, very narrow exceptions for when we can deny a project that is protected by the Housing Accountability Act. And, and it doesn't seem like that we fall into any of those exceptions.
Thank you, Ms. Patel.
Through the chair, I do, I do have some, some comments. I want to note that while I don't live in this neighborhood, I live in a nearby neighborhood and I run through this neighborhood a lot. It's a beautiful neighborhood. And I appreciate that the residents want to ensure that it remains a beautiful place to live and to visit. I, I also understand that it can be confusing or perhaps a bit murky as to what kind of laws, what, what guidelines, what ordinances, both at the city level and the state level, apply to a given project. And where our, our design guidelines apply, it's basically, it's a very limited set of types of projects nowadays. And that's basically when you have a project that adds no new housing. Because we are in such a, such a bind with, with a limited amount of housing and extremely expensive real estate, when you add an additional unit to a site, it becomes, it becomes protected by the Housing Accountability Act to avoid, you know, shenanigans and, and, you know, indefinite delays due to, you know, one interpretation versus the other. And so, you know, unfortunately, our design guidelines that have been put in place with intent to make beautiful places do not apply to this project in the sense that they can be legally applied. The objective design guidelines that we develop in the future should hopefully allow less murkiness as far as what is allowed and what our future neighborhoods will look like. But at this point, we're kind of in a transition period where we have design guidelines that have very limited applicability now. So what we do have are zoning code standards that, that it appears this project complies with. The, this shadow study, I want to emphasize, it was deeply frustrating to me. And most of my frustration is aimed at the designer. I think that this could be a good lesson in the future that a shadow study that will be viewed by the public should understand what the public would see and how they interpret a plan as well as an elevation and what that means. Because the shadow study is deceptive. Like, if you didn't know any better, and probably 99% of people wouldn't think twice about it, you would think that the shadows are being cast on the tops of the buildings to the left and to the right. And that just isn't the case. And so it's really unfortunate because that frustrates and wastes the time of the public and also can cause unnecessary consternation. So I just would hope that the designer take that as a lesson learned. And it's unfortunate that, that it's being used in such a way that it perhaps was not intended. And without, I don't see any, any ill, can, ill means or ill intent from the usage. It is important that, that we provide opportunities for solar and that, you know, we understand the implications of new buildings correctly. And so, that being said, I would agree with everybody else. I think that there's very little that we can do legally if this were to be appealed again. The, the project owner would be able to sue the city. So if we were to deny it. And so I just, we, we're not really in a place where we have any negotiation ability, nor do I think it's appropriate. I think that the fact that they've worked with staff to- I think that the fact that they've worked with staff to apply our zoning standards to this project means that this project is deemed appropriate under our city's laws. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Adam.
Through the chair, may I make one more comment?
Sure.
Thank you. And that is just, I think, to piggyback on Commissioner Nugent's comments a little bit. You know, we've had projects come before us in the past that are protected by the HAA, and, you know, I think sometimes the public is not aware of what these laws are, and not aware of what the implications may be for the projects that come before us. And so I would love, I know we can't talk about it today, and we would have to agendize it for a future meeting, but would love to talk about how we could potentially get some of that information included with the neighborhood notices that are sent out about the projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Seema. I wanted to thank staff, the applicant, the appellant, public commenters, and of course, the commissioners for thoroughly understanding and presenting your views, your points of views. I was not trying to discourage a public comment earlier when I said I'm a little frustrated that we ended up here, because I think public comment is, out of all of the other participants, the most important aspect of our meetings. That's why we're here, is to listen to the public. I think using this property and turning it into two dwellings is a perfect model. I actually think it's a good-looking project. Yes, it could have some more architectural features that may enhance it and make it blend a little bit better with the neighborhood. Yet, to me, overall, it fits the neighborhood. I am not happy that we're shading any part of solar. I have solar. If that happened to me, I would not be pleased. I am a huge environmentalist. I hate the removal of trees. I would much rather see us be able to save them, yet in this instance, we don't get to enforce that. This is, I walked the site today. Sorry, I trespassed on your property, but there was a notice up. Seems like it's a good fit. It's a nice use of that land. Those lots are not huge, but it's using the property to, I think, would be the most benefit. ADUs are an extremely important component for lower-cost rentals and extended families. And when you can do that, it should not be questioned, and that's what the state law says. So I understand the public's concerns, and they're legitimate, yet I think the positives of this project outweigh any negatives. Do we have anybody who would like to read the, I don't know what it's called, the resolution?
Through the chair.
Please.
I would like to make a motion to hereby deny the appeal and uphold the decision by the zoning administrator to approve planning application PA... Oh, I'm starting to read a different... Let me go back and make a motion on what's on the screen versus what was in the findings. I make a motion to adopt a resolution to deny the appeal of the zoning administrator's decision to approve the special use permit for demolition of an existing single-family residence and the single-family dwelling design review for construction of a new 2,238-square-foot two-story single-family residence with a detached one-car garage and accessory dwelling unit located at 125th, 125 15th Avenue, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Chair Williams is absent. Vice Chair Adneder?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 4-0, we'll close that item and move on to reports and announcements.
Happy to start. So commissioners, I just wanted to share that over the last month or so, the city council has had some pretty involved discussions about the general plan update, specifically as relates to proposed heights and densities and in the context of Measure Y. So just wanted to flag that for you, that those have been in the works, and they will affect our general plan elements as we are drafting them, which we hope to complete by June-July for release and review by the public. The city also received HCD, the State Housing and Community Development Department, their letter on our housing element, and staff is actively working on responding to their comments and making amendments as necessary. We are anticipating a city council study session next week on that item. Speaking of objective design standards, we had workshops last week, one with the developer community and one general community workshop that was focused on the staff's approach to the objective design standards, making sure that there is flexibility in terms of, you know, the architectural styles that can be incorporated, staying true to some of the comments that we've heard about transitions and diversity of architectural styles, and, you know, the input that we've received from the commission over the last few years on different projects. So you're trying to fold all that in. We are actively working on incorporating the community's input into the next version of the draft, and hopefully scheduling a planning commission study session, probably in June. We're not yet settled on a timeframe. Let's see. I do want to reiterate, I know we sent an email out just as a reminder to commissioners that if you are going to be absent or remote, please let us know. There are some new requirements under the Brown Act, or I think the older requirements have phased out, which mean that even for remote attendance, we still need to have a quorum within the jurisdiction. So, you know, I know we've had some challenges in the past, but we really appreciate you guys putting in all this effort. I know you guys sent us questions, you know, before the meeting, and review all the materials, and we do appreciate it, and, you know, we would really like to hear from you in advance or as soon as you know that you're going to be out. Our admin team maintains a spreadsheet, so we can track if we have quorum or not and can adjust meeting hearings accordingly. Let's see, there was one last item. So for next meeting, which is scheduled for April 25th, we are still tentative for that meeting. We are looking at a code amendment that we may be able to schedule. Our noticing deadline is tomorrow, so we will know by tomorrow if we are on or not. But I just wanted to check if the commissioners present here tonight are going to be in person or remote. I see thumbs up.
Yes.
I should already be on a list for being out.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Adneder.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for staff updates.
Great.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Can I ask a question about one of those announcements?
Yes.
The HCD letter, thank you for sending it. Do you know, is the housing element planned to come back to planning commission after the, you said, council study session next week?
At this point, we don't have any plans to bring it back immediately, Commissioner Wiggins, but we'd have to make, you know, work with HCD to resolve all their comments. And if there are amendments to the housing element, that'll have to go through the process again for adoption.
Thank you.
Ms. Patel, did you have any comments for this part of the meeting?
I guess one thing we could give an update on is, three of us attended the Planning Commissioners Academy a couple of weeks ago. Is this a, are we allowed to discuss that or mention that here?
No, we're good. We'd love to hear your input.
Yeah, no, I thought it was a really good opportunity to meet commissioners from other cities and jurisdictions in California. You know, between the three of us that were in attendance, we tried to divide up some of the sessions so that we could get good coverage of all of the talks, learned a lot about CEQA. I think we all took the advanced CEQA session, which was fascinating. Yeah, I think it was, overall, a really good experience. I think one thing that surprised me a little bit is that I didn't know anything about the League of California Cities before I attended the Planning Commissioners Academy. And I guess I just thought that it was like, I don't know, a state-run organization of all of the cities and jurisdictions in California. But I think that actually it's, I'm not sure if they're a nonprofit or not, but I don't think that they're actually a part of the state government. In fact, there was a session where they did a legislative review, and they, I think they might actually be lobbyists because they were advocating for certain laws that have been proposed this legislative session, and advocating against other laws that had been proposed. And so I found that a little bit surprising, because I know that we have to be careful as commissioners about, you know, attending meetings or being members of organizations that may advocate for or against things that come before us as commissioners. So I was a little bit curious, you know, about that, and whether it's okay that we are attending that or listening to that, or, you know, if there is opportunities to attend other conferences that may have, you know, similar but differing opinions on that kind of content.
Well, thank you.
I don't know, Commissioner Wiggins or Vice Chair Adneder, if you want to add to any of that.
Please.
Through the chair, I would love the opportunity. So generally, second to everything Commissioner Patel said, this was a great opportunity to educate ourselves on both laws that are on the books today that impact our work as commissioners, and to get, and to learn more about pending legislation at the state level that may come to impact the work that we're doing. And so I think what I would add to Commissioner Patel's comments is that the League of Cities' positions drew, or drew out, I would say, from the room, elicited a divided room in terms of those stances. And there was one in particular with regards to the Surplus Land Act. The League of Cities was supportive of an amendment to the law that would make it easier for that land not to be offered to affordable housing developers. And so that one stuck out to me. It's been an interesting stance to take in the midst of an affordable housing crisis. Nevertheless, I think this is demonstrating that it initiated a lot of important conversations and spurred us on, I think I speak for Commissioner or Vice Chair Adneder as well, to learn more and be more engaged. So very appreciative to have had the opportunity. And to you, if you want to add anything else, Vice Chair.
Sure. Thanks, you guys, for your great input. I enjoyed the conference. It's always interesting to get fresh eyes on it, as the two of you were for me this time. And I've gotten used to the League of California Cities being somewhat aggressive and confrontational with the housing components, which I really didn't ever grasp or understood. Yet, it was, again, pretty much their stance, which, at a time that the whole state is grappling horribly for change, the league is not moving in that direction at the speed that I think would be beneficial to the individual cities in California. What I was very impressed with this time was the much more diverse group of commissioners, lots of women, lots of women of color, lots of African-American gentlemen. It was so refreshing to get that input. And that is also affecting the mood in those rooms, and it's a positive effect, and it's just great to see. And the more we're able to incorporate that component into our general planning for the state, the better off we will be. I was very pleased with most of the presentations, yet you do need to take them with a grain of salt. My one major disappointment was the cocktail hour was not free, and that made no sense. So, very surprising. What I did notice, and this is kind of a side note, numerous different commissioners from other jurisdictions had mentioned that they meet for dinner on a semi-regular basis, which is either the room is supplied by the city, or, and they would bring their own food, or the city would buy their food. But it's just, the reason that these conferences, to me, are important is so you not only get to know other members within the state, but you also get to know your fellow commissioners better in a leisurely manner. And I think that is extremely important for a highly functioning body. And if we're able to institute something like that here, I think it would make us a better body. So just a thought. But overall...
Through the chair.
Yes.
If I may add one more comment that echoes that, I think by far the most valuable part of attending the Planning Commissioners Academy was actually getting to spend three days with my fellow San Mateo planning commissioners. You know, we don't get to spend much time with each other off the dais, and so it was just really great getting to know Commissioner Wiggins and Vice Chair Adneder a little bit better and spend that time together. So I echo those statements.
Beautiful, thank you. With that, are there any other comments? Do we want to schedule dinner for next week? With that, I'll close the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thanks. I had a script.